All right, we will call this City of International Falls Regular City Council Meeting to Order. It is 5:30, May 20th, 2024. If you could all join me and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, thank you, everybody. We are short two city councilors tonight. Mike informed us this morning that he would not be able to make tonight's meeting, and Councilor Wegner is in Washington, DC for his work. So you get the three of us. First item is approving the agenda. I do have one addition that came in. Chief Manasa had asked if we could make a proclamation this evening similar to the governor's proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. So if the council would consider adding that under number 12 for new business, Chair would entertain a motion for the agenda with the addition.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. We have a second by Councilor Buller. They shouldn't mess up names tonight, it should be pretty easy.
Did this come with some funding from the governor?
There was an update. We are going to be getting approximately $208,000 from the state through the EMS bill that got passed. So it doesn't come with this proclamation, but you know, it's second rate. So we have a motion and a second, I'll call the question.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0.
Should I move over there?
Get a little bit closer. Do you want to vote from the other side tonight? All right, first we have, in the minutes, we have minutes of our May 6, 2024 meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those. We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0. We'll go to the minutes of May 13. Committee of the whole meeting, Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0. We'll go to the payments and claims. We have International Falls regular transfers going to the 401 Permanent Improvement Fund, $66,666.66. That's coming evenly from the 601 water and the 603 sewer in the amount of $33,333.33. Going to the 403 Reserve for Capital Outlay is going to be $20,567.25. That's coming from the 601 water in the amount of $14,693. And the sewer fund 603 in the amount of $5,874.25 for total transfers of $87,233.91. International Falls regular claims, $360,761.39. International Falls Public Library Board claims, $13,738.80. And airport major capital claims of $90,975.70 for a total accounts payable and claims of $465,475.89. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution in the payments and claims. We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries 3-0. Audience, is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything forward? I would just like to welcome back one of our audience members, Crystal Clance. We haven't seen you in a while, and we greatly appreciate having you come back in. Public hearing, we have nothing there. We do have a bid. Consider the bids for and approve the first reading of the contract ordinance for the 2024 Fifth Street Storm Sewer Relocation Jail Project. Chair would entertain a motion for the first reading of that contract ordinance. We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion. Call the question.
Mayor?
Yeah, okay, yes.
I think it should be noted that you are accepting the low bid of KGM in the amount of the $302,766. Is that what the, should be included in the motion?
Okay. Okay.
I'll include what she said.
Okay. Okay, we're taking the low bid in the first reading. Second? All right, we will call the question.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0. Just due to the time sensitivity of this, I have been informed that we, it would make sense for us to have a second reading before next week. So as mayor, I'd like to call a special city council meeting for Friday morning. What time works for you guys?
Tell me.
10 o'clock?
10 o'clock it is. 10 o'clock Friday. We will have a special meeting, and we have two orders of business that'll be at that special meeting. The first one will be the second reading of this contract ordinance, and the other piece will be some information on the band shell and the work that, the engineering for that. Is there anything you should add for that? For just knowledge?
Just that we'll be looking at proposals for the design of the rebuild. You'll be looking at two proposals and accepting one of them.
Perfect. Thank you. So we'll have that at 10 o'clock on Friday morning. We'll go to the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda, and this is to allow the necessary expenses for the Human Resources Safety Director to virtually attend the 2024 Public Employer Labor Relations Association Summer Conference, and that's August 7th through 9th. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Buller. No discussion on the consent agenda. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0. All right, we will go to new business. Consider the use of Smokey Bear Park by Rainy Lake Medical Center Foundation for Color 5K Family Run. Emily Getty. Would like to come forward. Not necessarily, but we'd love to hear about your event.
Um, all the information, oh, gosh. All the information is in your packet. We brought the event back last year as a fundraiser for the Rainy Lake Medical Center Foundation. We had it on Labor Day as it had been in the past, and it kind of took a hiatus, and then the foundation brought it back, so we would like to bring it back again this year. We think it was hugely successful. We had about 130 people last year. We hope to increase that this year. The map is in your packet there. Don't ask me to recite the streets because I don't know them off the top of my head. But I think that the route worked really well. As far as the color went, we didn't have, we stayed away from residences, so nobody had any color in their yard or anything. I think everybody had a good time.
Perfect. Any questions for Emily? Hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion for the use of Smokey Bear Park, and that's basically how you guys are asking for it, correct?
Yep.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilor Kaler.
Mayor?
Yes?
Is there anything that Public Works needs to assist with on this that you recall?
You know, last year, I think because of the picnic, I think they just brought us like a garbage can just kind of by the registration area if there was any garbage there. But really, there was nothing that we needed additionally. Potentially, the pylons there, we could use those for like color station, but I think Rainy Lake Medical Center has some of those too. So we can let you know in advance, but I don't think so.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0. Passes, thank you so much. All right, next we have a commercial loan program funding in the amount of $24,999.99 requested by TrueStar on behalf of Dancing Winter Sky LLC to improve a building at 510 Sixth Street. City Administrator, you wanted to just give us some background on this one?
Yeah, we sure can, and I believe the Duch arms are here also to speak on this as well. This is a standard commercial loan program through TrueStar's requesting. This one is a little bit different. They will be pulling a second mortgage on this property, so our commercial loan would be third in line as far as order. Normally, we're just second due to one loan, and then a following. So you can see that is outlined by their lender, Mr. Tamevi. And so with that little bit of difference, I asked them to come in and give a little background on their project and for you guys to make that consideration.
Perfect, please come up.
This is my first city council meeting.
That's all right. We got rid of the bullies.
In terms of background, should I just give you a little bit of?
Absolutely.
Okay, so this is the, a building that had been sitting idle for around 10 years. We purchased it two years ago. There was one resident in an apartment complex that would normally have housed four. We've been working on the building steadily for 18 months now, and we've completed two units, and we're seeking the loan to complete the remaining two. The second mortgage, like first position, second position thing is just we got a mortgage to purchase the building from TrueStar, and then this would be a refinance that refinances all of the work that we've been putting in over the last 18 months.
When you finish this, it's four units. Are they single units, doubles? I mean, what?
So the four units are two-bedroom, one bathroom with a laundry room in the basement. And we are renting, we plan on doing long-term rentals for three of them, and then reserving one to do short-term rental, and then we'll stay there when we visit town.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for them? All right, Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the commercial loan funding program. We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion.
Just that I, we, this is stuff we dearly need in town in some apartments, so thank you for doing it and sticking your neck out per se, because you never know with these things. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I, the only piece that concerns me is the third, the third more, or third in line on it. But specifically, I said the last time we had a housing one, how important it is to get our housing stock back up, and I take that into consideration as this comes up. So just if another one that comes up and we end up being in third position, I just want to make sure that everyone's clear moving forward that this isn't a precedent. This is a specific need that we have, which is housing, and that's why I'm voting for it. But I do have concern being the third in line, but I am going to support it because I understand how important our housing needs are, so. With that, I'll call the question.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
How'd your first city council meeting go?
Great, so far. We'll see how it goes from here.
All right, next we have a mayoral proclamation for June 3rd through 7th for poppy distribution week for the VFW. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion. Just, this is the number-one fundraiser that the VFW has in a calendar year. So the folks that are out there distributing poppies, let's take care of them because this is how a vast majority of their projects are funded across the state for our veterans. So very excited that we're going to be doing poppy distribution. Call the question.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0. Next, we have a mayoral proclamation as June 2024 as Pride Month. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion, we have a motion by Councilor Kaler.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion. Just want to say that this is an organization that's been doing this in our community for many, many years. At least, at least the last six or seven that I know of. And I'm happy that we are inclusive, and we allow people to demonstrate and do, you know, stand up for what they believe in, and I think that it's great that our city is inclusive and allows people to do that.
And I was attended last year along with you, and demonstrate might be a strong term, strong word. Yeah, but showing there's some work, yeah. Yeah, no, it was very well-attended and, yeah.
So we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0. Next, we have a resolution approving an application for a permit for a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Rotary Club July 1st at the amphitheater located at 360 Highway 11 East. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that. We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. As a follow-up to that, we'll go to a resolution approving a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Rotary Club July 3rd, 4th, and 5th for the Fourth of July Celebration at Smokey Bear Park located at 600 Third Street. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that. We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0. Next, accept the resignation notice from Planning Commissioner member Tara Besh and approve appointment of Linnea Imhoff to fill the vacant position on the planning commission. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resignation.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Second by Councilor Buller. We'll call the question on the resignation.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries 3-0. And secondly, Chair would entertain a motion to appoint Linnea Imhoff to fill the vacant position. We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0. Next, consider a request to purchase three HP workstation computers for the police department as a budget item from their capital outlay.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0. Next, consider stock commissioning and building solutions to provide a full commissioning process for the Cary Park Health and Wellness Center. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion.
Maybe if Ted wouldn't mind coming up and explain a little bit, even though I read it and understood it from others.
Did you write this one yourself?
Yep.
That's cool.
Where was your assistant?
Thank you, Mayor Council. As part of the bonding money we received for the design and engineering of Cary Park, one of the processes before we can get that money is to do the pre-design. I was informed about three weeks ago that we need to bring the commissioning agent onboard during the pre-design. We've got money in the budget. I believe it's about $3,500 starting out. $3,750 is the pre-design. We've got money in the budget for that. As part of, when we move into the design phase, we'll be able to use the bonding dollars to help with the design. And as we slowly move through the construction, occupancy, those items will be part of our construction funding if the project moves forward. So I'm trying really hard to get this pre-design completed. It's been a real education. But this, as, when you get state funding, it needs to be re-designed. There's some hoops to run through. The one thing about the commissioning agent is the commissioning agent works solely for the city. They do not work for the design or any of the engineers. So they are there to look out, to make sure we're getting what we're supposed to and that it works the way it's supposed to as the process goes through. In the past, I've seen some commissioning agents that always seem to have a tie with one of the design engineers, and I specifically went out and got somebody that's a totally neutral party that will solely be working for us to make sure we get what we're supposed to.
Excellent. Any questions for Ted? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries 3-0. All right, we have a whole bunch of Public Works Committee stuff. Just sit down.
I gotta grab my packet.
See, it is, even though we voted and discussed it, so we have had inquiries around now about community centers and YC and all these things. We're headed in the right direction, not that we're building one or not, but at least we're using our bonding money to stick with the process.
And I did see a handful of those posts on social media, and the people that were asking the questions. I did reach out to them personally, and I've set up a couple of meetings with those folks to show them where we started, where the process is, and how we're moving forward. And I think for the first time, it really seems like it's being a grassroots movement that we need something like this, so I want to get those folks to understand where we're at so we can put them into the process of what the city's doing.
And then during, when we, during the old timers hockey tournament, when I had the evaluation from Carl Sanderson, people said, yeah, this is nice, because now people are also finding it, it would be nice if we build this, if we could also have somewhere where we could hold like events and like that. I said, and now I've said, yes, yes, we do. And then there is a plan for that, I do believe, but, so.
No, I really think that, you know, the vision of, you know, five, six years ago, I mean, before I was even in this role, looking at that and seeing that there were issues with our recreational opportunities in our community and just kind of doing the legwork. I think now we're in a position where, as people are asking, why aren't we doing anything? We have, we have a plan. We have something that we're able to say we are working towards this. So I think we're in a really good spot on that. But let's move back into the council agenda. All right, Public Works Committee recommendations. Consider architect proposal for equipment garage and vector garage from DSGW Architecture with budgeted funds from Capital Outlay. Ted?
So as part of our facility study, the equipment garage, or the blue building, as they say, we, you know, part of that was that I got direction that we're going to keep that building. So this is part, this is the first step of bringing an architect and an engineer onboard and start laying out what is going to have to be done to the building to bring it back up. You know, if the building hasn't been touched in over 30 years, it's going to cover everything from inside out.
All right, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the DSGW architecture budget. We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion.
Just said, I think this is a good start of putting some, from the study we had, putting some of the things in place that we can handle right now, or are easier to handle. Like that, and I'd like to thank Ted for also using a street slang and local naming of the buildings.
Yes, I appreciate that as well. All right, so we have a motion and a second. We'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0.
Even though I do know what a actor is, no.
I knew what a actor was too. I had that one down. Consider design and engineering proposal for the equipment garage and vector garage from AW Knoodle?
Kettle.
Kettle. And Sons with budgeted funds from Capital Outlay.
So this is, this is the mechanical engineer who's going to do the air quality and the plumbing. The only thing that we did not do is solicit any professional services quotes for electrical because we are not adding, you know, we're looking to replace. So if, we need a mechanical engineer for the plumbing side of it and for the air quality, the HVAC, the heaters, that type of stuff. But the electrical, we're hoping that it's just a swap-out. Now, if we have to involve an electrical engineer, we will. The one thing is keeping these two contracts separate. DSGW, you know, normally when you hire a mechanical engineer, they can mark it up. I kept it two separate, so to try and save a little money. And all of these projects, depending on what we do, we're going to do them in phases, and it's all going to be with budgeted dollars.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion.
I think this is good, Ted, that we're doing this, just because we got our report on our buildings, and what was it, $82 million, and there's no way we can afford to do anything like that. But by starting anyway, and do what we can do each year, we could probably work towards bettering our facilities a lot. So thank you, Ted.
And I think, yeah, neither one of Ted's main goals and idea too is to centralize the public works and as well, towards that.
Well, and one of the points that Councilor Buller brings up, I think about this a lot like we did with our roads when we first had it. We tried to engineer and deal with the roads that weren't in horrible shape yet because we could save money by fixing the ones that weren't in the worst shape. But before they were, got degraded to the point where it was going to be so expensive. And that's what we're doing here with some of these buildings. Before they get completely destitute, let's get them up, let's get them fixed, and moving forward now that we have a game plan that we're going to have one area, one campus for public works. I think what we're doing makes sense in the long term. And yeah, we're just taking a little piece of it, but just trying to make little incremental changes that are going to benefit us for the long run. So I agree wholeheartedly with both of your statements. So we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 3-0. Next, consider accepting the 17th Street Water Main Replacement Bid in the amount of $739,758.75 from KGM Contractors as part of the county project.
Prices came in way over the engineer's estimate. We really do not see a way of getting out of it because the county lumped all their projects together. I've got heartburn over it, but I, you know, we're talking with Jason. I don't see how we can get out of it. That's, I'm, you know, it's, and the bidding's so weird because some stuff is way under engineer's estimate, and stuff is way over, and it's just tough to put a, you know, to get a pulse on how it's going to go.
So the question I have out of this is if they're doing the KGM contractors, and the base bid is 2.9 million, and our portion is 739, how is it that as the bids go up, our portion goes down?
So it was the way the bid was packaged out there, so they were line item bid it, and KGM, the low contractor, bid our portion higher than the rest of them, so.
Well, can't we accept?
Well, can't we accept sand gravel companies' bid?
Though, the reason why we did it with the county was because the county's doing the roadway rate there at the same time, so to bring in another contractor, you know, plus it's the county that bid it, not us, so we have to go with what the county had.
Well, now I have heartburn over the whole thing too. All right. Well, we have what, so, so theoretically, what happens if we don't do this? I'm not, I'm not, I'm, just curious.
If we, if we rejected our portion of it, it could substantially affect the bid, so the county might have to rebid the whole thing.
Can we do that, though? That's a question we had, it was at Public Works, can we reject it? Can we not take that bid?
I mean, I, I would recommend talking to your attorney.
I would like to talk to our attorney at this time.
You want to know what would happen if you rejected our portion of the bid?
Yeah.
Um, I'm going to have to look at the, I mean, did we enter into a contract with the county, I'm assuming, that said, yeah, we'll cover all this, go out for bids?
Yeah, I guess we did do that, but, but theoretically, and I'm not even trying to be, I, I'm going to vote for, for this to move forward, but I, I, I do have some serious heartburn when, when the, the low bid is our highest portion and that the, the highest bid, we have the least portion of it, and, and I just, I, I, I struggle with that, something fierce.
Yeah, I'd have to take a look at the contract and see if there's a way out, but I, I completely agree. I'd assume there's something along the line that, you know, we gave them the authority to go out for bids, but I'm not sure, I'd have to look.
Okay.
We did.
We did. Okay, so if, when does the county need this information from us?
They're planning on approving it tomorrow, if we approve ours.
Well, I, I was even thinking, let's, let's have a moment to think about this and try to figure it out and maybe put it on the special council meeting on Friday, but I think we're getting, we're kind of getting pushed into a corner on this and...
We've, we've also made it quite clear that we won't be bidding like this anymore. So we're, we're looking at, if, if there's, if we have utility work that's under a county road that they're going to do, we're probably going to do our utility work the year before and live with the headache of it being gravel for a year. That's the struggle, is, is we've got Water Main, that, they're rebuilding the road over the top, and I don't want to get in a position five years from now when we have to start digging up that new road.
Fair enough. I, all right. So, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the, the low bid with our portion of seven-hundred-thirty-nine-thousand, five, seven-hundred-fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Very strong, committed second. All right, we have a motion and a second, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries three zero. Thank you. All right, consider advertising for and hire a part-time seasonal assistant for the police department. Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Taylor. Do we have, or, I'm sorry, Councilor Buller, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Taylor. Discussion?
I'll just, I'm going to vote no, because I was told we were going to be able to operate and there would be no added employees and, on my, the chief isn't here, but I'd say that, him and the assistant chief have to answer the window on occasion. I think that will work. I mean, it's, and that's what it is, because it's Heather, it's Heather, she's there, someone comes to the window, is the chief here, and she goes and gets the chief. Well, they can cut out the middleman, but that's what they have to do, but that's just my thoughts.
Fair enough. Any additional discussion?
Please. Has this, this part-timer, it's, it's happened in the past, hasn't it?
It has not.
It has not, this would be, this would be no.
Whereas before, the, the city police assistant didn't have window responsibilities, that was taken care of by the sheriff's department's employee at the front window, which in this case is, is the same thing, is the chief there, yeah, let me call him, or whatever, or even I would go up there if there was no one there when I was working there.
So, and, and we, we had this on our agenda two weeks ago and we didn't have a second, we brought it back to the committee of the whole and we, we had a, a conversation with Chief Koscheck about it, and, you know, he, he made it pretty clear that, you know, he'd like to have this, it, it is a budgeted item that he has in his, in his budget. However, he also said that, you know, it's up to the council to make the decision, he just wants to know. He, he brings things forward that he thinks that would help his operation run and maintain, but ultimately, we get to make the decision on that, and the summer is his busiest time, just because people are out and about and there are more calls that come in in the summer. But I, I just want to be very clear that he, he does understand that this is something new and he just wanted to see how the council felt about it, and we, we have had a couple of conversations and now it is officially before us, and I appreciate that he's doing what he needs to do to try to run his department more effectively.
And I agree.
And I know you feel the exact same way. So, anyways, we have a motion and a second, we'll call the question.
No.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, so it passes on a two-to-one vote.
This, that just all of a sudden, no, that just made me think of another discussion we had last week about another, I'll tell you afterwards. It's not that important, but I think if you think hard, we'll all remember the discussion I'm talking about, had something to do with the wolf. I'll talk to you after.
Oh my God, I can't, I'm, I'm at a loss.
It's not that important.
Consider the first reading amending the Mid-Continent Communications franchise agreement, including an additional ten-year term. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second under protest.
Second.
For the greater good.
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion?
Just, you know, I'm still missing my twins, even, and I'd just like to say, once we have that discussion, maybe they're doing us a favor with, when we talked to the gentleman from MidCo, because they've lost six in a row now, so, maybe he's doing us a favor. And it's not my fault they're losing before I went to the game live on Wednesday, I just want to throw that in there.
Fair enough. Well, and what, what I did find interesting about having, with the conversation from the person from MidCo is the explanation that he gave about the Twins specifically in Bali, is they, they are in, in contract dispute, and the reason they're in contract dispute is to try to keep our, our billing low, because the more that they pay for any services, the more that they put that on. And we also had a conversation about CBF, or CBC.
Yeah.
So, there is a, a phone number and a place you can request to have CBC come back, but he even pointed out that it's because it's a very small portion of their viewing audience that used to have CBC, so, it was actually a really good conversation.
All legitimate reasons, but doesn't make me feel any better at seven o'clock on a Saturday night in the winter. That's on Hockey Night in Canada.
I, I, I was aware of it, I...
Aware there too, yeah.
I love CBC.
Yeah, see? So it's not just Pete.
Well, you know, we could always have a demonstration for, for CBC.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
You don't have the Twins on TV?
No.
This, I had an employee that's sent me an email today saying, we can pinpoint a dime in the middle of a swamp in Gujichin County, but we can't watch the Twins.
Yeah, yeah.
And then he responded again, oh, Pete.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I know, and I, I don't even need to know the name of the employee, do I, or I bet I do know the name of the employee, don't I?
Oh my gosh.
I didn't even know what he was talking about, I mean, the CBC.
Yeah.
They pinpointed that in the swamp.
Like I said, like, no, that's, like I said, like, you know, everybody has their thing and that's my thing.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, we'll call the question.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion carries three zero. Consider ESX Technology Cybersecurity Managed Services. Todd?
Mayor, Council, how are you?
Very good.
Good. Yeah, as we discussed at the committee of the whole meeting, this is for ESX to help us implement our new firewalls and also to monitor the network for intrusion for the next three years, and like I said, I think it'll be a good improvement in our security, information security that will really pay off in the long term.
Excellent. Any questions for Todd on this?
I think it's a good thing too, I mean, he explained to us too that it was like a twenty-four-seven thing too, so we're being monitored all the time, either by us or by the company, so I, I think it's important that we have this time.
All right, well, Chair would entertain a motion to move forward.
Well, I'll, whatever way you want to write it, don't, I'll second, he can move.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Buller, a second by Councilor Taylor. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries three, zero. Thank you.
What we need for meetings like this is like Canelo for jump balls in basketball, so we'll be pointed whose it is.
Remember who did it last time.
All right. Next, we have a late edition.
What, we got one more?
Oh, I'm sorry. I always jump, I'm sorry. The first reading of the updated city charter as presented by the Charter Commission, I'll hand this to Pete as the president of the Charter Commission.
Well, like we talked at the committee of the whole, we went back after we had, the fire chief pointed out that we had omitted the civil service for the fire department, we went back and got the language in there that we thought was correct, what we needed in the charter regarding the Civil Service Commission in the charter, and after, well, it'll be three years now of the committee, Crystal being one of those dedicated individuals that we went over it almost word by word and redeveloped it, so, we didn't change what it says, but how it says, pretty much, so it's easier, and some of the processes that we've already amended, or during the three years here at the council that we think will make it easier to understand and use, and I would recommend that this first reading, then we will, I believe, we'll have a discussion, or we can have that, know how long, we're going to have it up for public viewing, so people can read it and if they have any questions or not, and I think we were talking about having it here and possibly the library, and on, either on our website or on the website, that they could come take a look at it up here. And we were, at one time, there's talk of having them both, but I think was a consensus just to have a new one on there, because it's, anybody thinks something's omitted or needed in there, they'll still know it.
Okay. So Chair would entertain a motion to have the first reading.
I will move, have the first reading.
All right, we have a motion by Councilor Taylor. Do we have a second?
I'll have the second this night.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and then just, just in conversation, was it thirty days that you wanted it up, so it would be the second meeting in June?
Yeah, yeah, thirty, I was thinking either the second meeting in June or the first one in July.
I'm fine with the first meeting in July.
July first?
July one.
Yes.
Do July one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries three zero.
Just want to thank the Charter Committee for all the work you've done.
Absolutely.
Yep, they worked hard.
I'm, I'm not trying to be a stickler on this one, but did we need, do we need to have a full member for this, for the first reading of the charter?
Ooh.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because it, because it has to be adopted.
It just popped into my head, I...
Yes, so sorry, yep, absolutely.
We were almost there. We were almost, we were almost, well, the next meeting then.
Yeah, so we...
Put it back on, first reading the next, first meeting in June, yes.
If we could just strike that last, it just, it just popped in my head, I apologize, but it worked, so, all right. I wish I would have thought of that before.
That's all right.
Yeah, you need a full unanimous, full council.
Do I have to unsecond then?
No, I think we're just going to strike this.
The problem being is Councilor Buller is gone the whole month of June.
Can we have the first reading on Friday? Can we put...
I don't know that you can do it at a special. I think it's got to be at a regular meeting. Yep, yep, correct, yeah, it's got to be at a regular, and Walt is out of town for the meetings in June.
Okay. Well, we will move forward.
We can put the draft one out there still.
Yeah, we can still...
I don't know that...
Yeah, we can do that, then we can vote on it in July meetings.
Advertising, you know, in the first meeting in July, you'll be considering the first reading.
Yep, perfect.
The committee of the whole has reviewed it and, you know, that you'll be looking at adopting the first reading in, on July third.
Yeah, that's good.
Or, excuse me, July first.
Well, and we could just do back-to-back meetings at that point, I mean, if we're, we're, we're making it pretty clear that we've been working on this, and, and there's no regulation that you have to have thirty days for...
No.
So if we can allow...
We don't have to.
...the entire month of June to take a look at it.
And then do the first reading, then do the second reading, the next meeting right away, then we're done.
Perfect.
Any changes, whatever.
So first reading will put on the July first council.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, we'll go to new business, which we have a proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. This was put before us by the fire chief, and it, it came in relatively late today. The request would be to have a proclamation similar to this and allow staff to write it up and allow my signature. So the Chair would entertain a motion to have a city proclamation, or a mayoral proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week, and it'll be drafted in my signature.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Taylor. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries three zero. Any other new business to come before the council? Hearing none, we'll go to reports of the administrator, attorney and department heads. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing additional at this time.
Okay, we'll go to city attorney.
I don't have anything to add.
All right, we only have one department head. Come on up, Ted.
That wasn't enough for you?
Never is. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Before you go any farther, could you just say your Minnesota Twins thing again? Because you weren't on camera, or you weren't on the thing, and I want to make sure that you get that out.
Well, just receiving the email saying that we can find a dime in the middle of a swamp in Gujichin County, but we can't watch the Twins.
I love that.
I had no idea, and then it was a follow-up, yes, we have no CBC. So, I, you know, and I, I know the history of the CBC, but I'm not a big Twins follower, but, yeah, obviously we've got some issues.
And no, and it started to affect the morale of our employees, which is obvious.
Here we go again.
All right, let's move forward. What do you have, Ted?
Anyway, I just wanted to come before you, last Tuesday, Sean Kelly and I, Mike Koscheck and his staff, part-time... and his staff partook in the job fair at the high school. We had two hundred and sixty young adults come through there. Sean and I were talking water, wastewater and public works. I want to thank Sean for his hard work. It was very successful. Actually, they're talking about doing it again next year, maybe twice, it was such a hit. It was very nice talking to the young people and trying to give them some direction on some lines of work that, you know, some careers that I don't think any of them have any idea that are out there. Last week, we also had Minnesota Rural Water in town for two days. We did water and sewer training Wednesday and Thursday. I want to thank Lisa for helping us set that up, but May has been a busy month with training and whatnot for staff and it's going well. Tomorrow, we have three fifth grade classes coming to tour the water plant on three different tours, so Sean Kelly's really, really pushing the water side and yeah, it's going well. Almost three years, started putting the VFDs in the water plant today, parts all finally came in, so it's a project where one of the staff looked at me and said, what are we doing? I said, I got to sit down and relook at it because it was almost three years waiting for the parts to get there for this project, so the water plant's a pretty big, busy place right now, so that's it.
Excellent. Any, any questions for Ted? All right, thank you.
Thanks Ted.
Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions? Is there anybody?
I would just like to mention that on Thursday, four to six, Mental Health Advisory Group is having a picnic at Kerry Park, so there'll be a picnic, some games, I think there'll be a bouncy house, but I said I am not going to be in charge of supervising the bouncy house this year because it gave me too many flashbacks of being the noon lady for people like our mayor and others, so that is it. And I'd like to thank Ted and the Public Works crew, I believe it's Rusty that puts up the banner over on the street of the group that sponsored it. And I've seen, I've seen some roller blade hockey players up at Holler, yes, and so, yeah, things are getting used and people out on the boat.
Well, I, I would like to add to that, apparently Northern Minnesota is the only place that has the noon lady terminology.
Oh, I'm aware, well aware.
That has been a conversation that has been coming up a lot lady, or a lot lately about noon ladies and I just find that really funny.
I'm sure there's some technical term they use now, like supervisor or something.
Yeah, yeah, a playground supervisor or whatever. Secondly, that same, that same park up there in Holler, I went past the other day and it was filled with pickleball players and I sent Ted a text and I said, this is fantastic and it is, it's getting used so much and I think that the conversation that we had about trying to do something behind the museum for pickleball, I think could go huge, so absolutely full up there. It's fantastic. Second thing for a meeting for me, this Wednesday, we have another Fourth of July Commission meeting, five fifteen, right here in this room. We are moving forward with some really good stuff for the, for the Fourth, so.
And just so you know, we're lined up to give out watermelon at the elk, so that part's taken care of.
Absolutely, it's already, it's already been discussed, that's a big piece.
I think I'll be handing out, I don't know if I'll be handling any of the knives part of it, but yeah.
All right, I, I don't have anything else to add. Do you have anything tonight? All right, we'll go to audience, is there anyone in the audience that has anything to bring forward? Hearing none, our next council meeting is going to be on Friday at ten o'clock, that special meeting that we, we discussed. We have correspondence in our packets from the Public Library Board on May eighth and Coochin County Board of Commissioners from April twenty-third. Our city offices are going to be closed on Monday, May twenty-seventh for Memorial Day and regular city council meeting's going to be June third at five thirty. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.